Well, the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, October 6, 2021. Sorry, my bad. Let's try that again. Take two. Well, the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for Wednesday, October 6, 2021, please come to order. This evening's meeting will be a virtual planning and zoning meeting hosted by Zoom. During this meeting, our procedures will be as follows. One, when you first enter the meeting, you will be in a virtual waiting room until the meeting host admits you. Two, please be aware that your camera, if you have one, and your microphone will be muted by the meeting host. When you enter the meeting, you can turn on your camera at any time so you can be seen by others if you choose to do so. In order to run an efficient orderly meeting in this virtual environment, unless stated otherwise by the meeting chairman during the meeting, the meeting host will keep everyone other than commission members muted. You will still be able to hear everything said by the commission members, even if you're muted and your camera is not on. There will be the opportunity for public comment during public hearings, at which time the public participants, public participants will be unmuted. Three, the secretary will read the legal call of the meeting as published according to Governor Lamont's executive order. Four, during the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explaining to the commission and others what is being presented. The meeting host will share all related documents on the screen as needed. In addition, all applications and supporting materials for each application on the agenda are available through the public meeting calendar page on the town website, www.cigilford.co.us, and also through a direct link on the planning and zoning page. Five, comments of town agencies will be read for each application, if there are any. There will be clarifying questions from commissioners. Six, there will then be the opportunity for clarifying questions from the audience. Please raise your hand through the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. First, those who wish to support the application may come forward. Second, those who oppose the application will then come forward. As this is a public hearing, it must be recorded as necessary for speakers to identify themselves. Each time they speak, stating their name and address. Seven, the applicant will then have the opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. Eight, once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the public hearing and regular meeting, during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as the decision of this commission and has the right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Nine, decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Planning and Zoning Department, 203-453-8039, or by emailing planning.zoning@ci.gilford.co.us after 9:00 a.m. Ten, all actions taken tonight by the commission will be on a roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. Seating this evening are the following members. Please raise your hand and say hello. Sean Cosgrove.
Hello.
Jamie Stein.
Hello.
Scott Edmund.
Hello.
Is Frank, we have Frank yet? No Frank yet. Bill Freeman.
Hello.
And I'm Phil Johnson. We are potentially waiting on Frank DeAndrea, but if in fact he shows up, we'll get him in. Present this evening are George Croll, our town planner and acting zoning enforcement officer. Lisa Piamino, planning and zoning administrative assistant. This meeting will be recorded via the Zoom platform and made available on the town website for viewing. The secretary will now read the legal notice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Notice is hereby given that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on October 6, 2021 at 7:30 p.m. This meeting will be conducted through a web and phone meeting only. Attendees are advised to not go to the regular community meeting location because a physical meeting will not take place. See below information to sign into Zoom meeting. The following applications will be heard. James and Joyce Glass, 2 Guilford Point Road, map 27, lot 7, zone R-3, coastal site plan for house renovation and addition within 100 feet of a coastal resource. Christopher Healy, Boston Post Road, map 78, lot 13, zone TS-2, and are a petition for zone boundary change. Joseph and Darlene DeRosa, 718 Mulberry Point Road, map 10, lot 18, zone R2, coastal site plan for 12-foot by 16-foot shed. Francis Slater and Michael Poole, 553 Mulberry Point Road, map 16, lot 57-1, zone R5, coastal site plan for a small addition. George Verba, 763 Mulberry Point Road, map 10, lot 131, zone R2, coastal site plan for installation of an elevator within 10 feet of coastal resources. Copies of these applications are available for inspection in the office of the zoning and planning and zoning commission, Town Hall South, 50 Boston Street, Guilford, Connecticut. At this hearing, persons may attend and be heard, and written communications will be received. Dated at Guilford, Connecticut, September 13, 2021, Phil Johnson, Chairman.
Thanks. I think that's probably a typo. It's probably 100 feet, isn't it, George?
Yes.
Okay, not 10. So normally let picks go with 10.
Like Ron Burgundy, I read whatever's put in front of me.
I hear you. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome Frank DeAndrea. Hey Frank, raise your hand. That makes, let's see. That makes seven of us. Good. First item on our agenda this evening. Sorry, would someone like to make a motion to open?
Someone would. Okay.
Call a vote. Sean Cosgrove.
Yes.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Now I'll also vote to open first item on our agenda. James and Joyce Glass, 2 Guilford Point Road, map 7, lot 7, zone R3, coastal site plan for house renovation and addition within 100 feet of coastal resource. I saw Mr. Glass there. Mr. Glass, are you here to present for yourself, or is there someone here on your behalf?
That'd be me, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Michael Harkin. I'm a professional engineer and principal of Harkin Engineering located at 78 Wolf Hollow Lane in the town of Killingworth, Connecticut. Again, here tonight on behalf of my clients, Jim and Joyce Glass for their property located at 2 Guilford Point Road. The subject parcel is comprised of 0.59 acres. It's located in the R3 zone. When George gets the drawing up on there, my site plan, George, if you can put that in there.
I have it up there now.
You have to share, you have to share your PDF. You're going to share your Adobe, not your Microsoft Windows.
And this, I'm sorry, before we get started, this is James Glass, just a point of clarifications. It's 2 Guilford Point Drive, not 2 Guilford Point Road.
That is correct.
Um, thank you.
You're not seeing this? Note, you need to double click on it.
You have to unshare what you're currently sharing and then share the application that you're open. So you're sharing the application, not the actual file.
And you could just share all your screens and that way all of them will come up.
Let me try that again.
That one.
We did.
Good job, George.
First test.
Come in and help me.
We're going to give you a B for that one, but that's okay.
Okay.
See how it goes by the end. Okay, again, so it's Guilford Point Drive. The subject parcels comprised of 0.59 acres. It's located in the R3 zone. It directly abuts Jacob's Beach and Long Island Sound. So as you're going down the entrance of Jacob's Beach, this is the first house located on the left-hand side on the water side. There's an existing house on the property as well as a shed. There's an attached garage. You may, commissioners may remember, we've been here a couple of times for different projects on the site. One was for a swimming pool. We also had a variance to add on to a second floor on the garage through ZBA. We're here tonight for a building addition and renovation of the house. Primarily, we're taking the second floor and we're adding on to that. We're going up in a small area. We are bouncing out an approximate eight-foot by 12-foot section to put a mudroom in. Other than that, 95% of the project is located in the same footprint that is pre-existing. As part of this project, of course, being directly adjacent to Long Island Sound, we are 100 feet within the coastal resource. So we do need a CAM application for this project, which we did submit. Honestly, we submitted this application way back in July already. So due to your meeting agendas being full, as well as a canceled meeting, we're here now in October. We've gone through the process of submitting the CAM application. I haven't heard anything back or haven't any correspondence from DEP. Honestly, I can't imagine they would have any problems because the previous work that we've done on the site was actually closer to Long Island Sound and the coastal resource. So primarily, we're farther away from all the previous work that we've done. Just some general housekeeping. We do have some erosion control measures, silt fenced, state hay bales on the site, basically looping in and securing all the construction area. So no debris or anything can get into Long Island Sound. On the left part of the screen, you can see all the details associated with that, as well as notes regarding erosion control, additional ones, stockpiles, no pesticide and fertilizer notes. Basically, your common items that DEP is looking for. The, as part of the project, we are bouncing out in one small section of the house. So we do need to do a B-100 analysis with the health department, which that has been approved. I think you're going to see a letter in the file from the health director regarding that. George, if you could please go to the first architectural sheet, so you can get a gist of what's pre-existing. And then we can go to the second sheet afterwards and you'll be able to see what we're proposing.
How's that?
You're still at a B. Maybe a C right now.
What's that?
Yeah, right now you're sharing your, the folder that you're looking at. You're not sharing the file.
I don't quite understand that, but I'll try that again.
It's all about the application. You're not actually sharing your whole overall screen, you're sharing the application, which is your.
But you can share the whole screen, correct?
You can. It's just, you're not taking us with you in your, in your clicks through. We're remaining in the folder.
Depends on the application, Bill. I've never, with Zoom, it's always been the.
I don't understand why this isn't, why you're not seeing this.
Right now you're not sharing anything.
Yeah.
That's okay. We'll get it locked down after this first one because I know you have a big agenda tonight. By the time you get to the end, you'll be a pro.
Bill, can you do this one?
I was not emailed those documents unless they're somewhere.
Yeah, you were.
If it makes it easier, we don't have to show. It's basically a second floor addition on the existing structure.
I don't understand why it didn't, why the first one worked and this one didn't. I mean, I'm looking at the screen.
Have you, did you click the screen share at the bottom?
Yeah, Trey.
Yeah, I did that.
Oh.
Phil, as the co-host, can you enable screen sharing for other participants?
We wouldn't have the files either.
Well, I'm assuming Michael has the files.
It's fair. I don't, I think that's restricted for this.
Yeah, Dr. Stein, the town of Guilford doesn't have that application where professionals can share. Only you guys can.
Understood.
You want to email me those documents quickly so then I can pull them right up?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Want me to?
Yeah. I did that. You had them, you had them earlier, Phil.
I can screen share my computer. I can tell you I don't have them, but that's, you know, neither here nor there.
I can work the first time around. Email the whole folder.
Yeah, where's your email?
Is this this? Is that correct, Michael?
Uh, yes and no. Yes. Why don't you go to the first page? That's actually the second page. That's the proposed conditions. Let's just show you the existing conditions.
Why don't you go to? I hope.
This one. That's the one we were just on.
Maybe there's multiple pages.
Yeah, trying to open.
Sometimes I think it's easier to download it from, right from the.
Okay, hold on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Bingo.
Sorry.
There you go. So you could see in the first page up in the left-hand corner, that's a photograph of the existing house. And then as you go through, you can see these are virtually the existing conditions up on the top, the floor areas. As we go down, you could see the next photo, the elevation view right there is the proposed condition. Basically, really just putting a redoing the portion of the existing second floor that's there and then adding a new second floor on throughout the upper level. So I mean, basically, like I said, we're 95% staying within the same basic footprint. We just have a small bump out to one side. Other than that, it's a, it's a pretty simple project. But for the record, you could see the proposed versus, you know, existing conditions. That's the point of it, to make it a complete record that you did see the architecturals. So with that being said, I guess that concludes my presentation. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Okay, well, let me stop the screen chair, go back to being in person.
Yeah, I'll start over.
I'm just going to mute George while we're working on that. I assume, Michael, that you've gone through the evaluations with respect to significant improvement in a flood zone?
Yeah, we, we basically submitted these plans a while back and then we, we just got, we just got information from the town engineer yesterday. She had some questions because the site is in three flood zones, a V-14, an AE-12, and an X. We had a LUMA done on the site for FEMA elevations. And then she had some comments that we would have to do a C-LUMA, which is basically a construction LUMA for Phil when the project physically happens. So that's an item and you probably have a letter from the town engineer, Ms. Janice Plazziak, in the file that states something to that effect.
Oh, Michael, this is Scott Ebbin. You mentioned earlier that you've got a ZBA appeal for the, over the garage. Was that for height limit? Is that what you said?
The, the, a portion of that existing garage is over the building setback line. And prior to this project of redesigning the entire house, we had just asked to lift the, a second floor on that existing garage. The reason being is the homeowner lived in Long Island up until COVID hit. And alls we wanted to do was put a car lift in there to get some more parking spaces for his vehicles. So we just wanted to lift the second floor. In order to do that, we had to seek a variance for the raising of that structure. When we, when the Glass family decided to move over here full-time to Guilford, they realized that the space, you know, just wasn't sufficient. And since we already had that variance, we decided, let's, let's do the whole second floor to really make it one of, you know, a home they want to be in full-time.
So again, the variance was, was to get you the height that you wanted or was to just do a project at all because of the setback?
Basically, a project at all, based on that. We met the height, we met the height requirements.
For Guilford.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions from commissioners? This is just a coastal site plan. Any questions or comments from public?
We do have the health department.
Memo.
Memo.
If you could grab that.
This is from Sonia Marino, dated October 5, 2021, RE. This project, the B-100A application for the above referenced property is approved. The approval is continued on the following. The bonus room cannot be accessed from the interior of the second floor. No plumbing allowed in the finished space. The application meets the requirements of requirements for 19-13-B-100A. The proposed application does not reduce the potential repair area for an onsite subservice sewage disposal system and a code compliant area exists on the property.
Great. Jamie, there's a memo here from Kevin McGee. Would you like to grab that?
Sure. Thanks, Phil. Dated October 5, 2021, to the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, environmental planner, regarding coastal area management review, James and Joyce Glass, 2 Guilford Point. Forgive me, I can't remember. It was Driver Road. I know it's one. Guilford, Connecticut, 06437, Assessor Map, 27, Lot 7. The applicant is proposing several additions to the existing house. The property is located in a FEMA Zone VE elevation 14 and FEMA Zone AE elevation 12. The coastal resource policies applicable for the property are coastal hazard area, coastal waters, shorelands, rocky shorefront, tidal wetlands, and beaches. The site plan provides for erosion and sedimentation control measures that are designed to protect the adjacent coastal resources. The work being conducted could have an impact on the adjacent coastal resources if the erosion and sedimentation control measures are not properly installed and maintained. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, the town of Guilford's zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to site construction. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silt fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Number two, the site should be inspected daily to make sure that all construction debris has been properly disposed of in a covered dumpster.
Okay, I don't believe we have any other memos.
Mr. Harkin, are you guys, have you seen this memo from Sonia? Were you fine with those stipulations from her?
I did, yes. I did receive the, the letter from Sonia, the Director of Health. I did not receive the letter from Kevin McGee. We don't have a problem with the letter from Kevin McGee. We can handle those. The only thing is it's, it's almost impossible to get a covered dumpster these days. But we can make sure that all the debris is, you know, is stationary inside that dumpster. We can cover it with such things as plywood or something like that, if need be.
Okay. Yeah, but I think just the concern is the stuff blowing out and going in the water, going on the beach, et cetera.
Yeah, we, we can make our own tarp or something like that. It's just the initial cover dumpster are extremely expensive and pretty rare, but we can, we can protect the debris from the dumpster from going into Long Island Sound. That's not an issue.
That's great. George, you'll just verify that and we'll be good to go on it. Any questions from commissioners or from the public?
I do feel there was, this is Jamie. There was just a comment in Sonia's memo about not running plumbing. It was unusual to hear in a memo from her. So can you just explain that for us?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's not a problem. Above the garage, the space is a storage space. And that's all we want to use it for, is storage. You see a lot of times in the shoreline that people will run plumbing through that and kind of make it into an in-law apartment or something. That was her kind of saying, listen, you can't put plumbing up there. You can't cut a doorway from the main house in there and use it as livable, habitable space. And we're okay with that. It was never an intent to, to make that into a bedroom in any way, shape, or form.
Understood. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions or comments from commissioners or from the public? Very good. Would someone like to make a motion to close?
Someone make a motion.
Sean Cosgrove.
Yes.
Thank you. Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Now I'll also vote to close. We'll act on this later on this evening. Next item on the agenda, Vaughn Knowles and Gary Knowles, 891-901, Boston Post Road, map 47, lot 4, zone PV, petition for zone boundary change from PV zone to TS zone. George, I don't know, are we going to try and tackle both of these at once or we do?
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense.
And then the second one is Vaughn Knowles and Gary Knowles, petition for regulation amendment to Article 17, Section 273, 120A, 6, restaurants to allow drive-through service by special permit in accordance with Section 273-118, an amendment to Table 5, Line 27A, ad quote-quote SP.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. It, I was a little surprised that the secretary did not read those into the opening.
I think this is a continuation from our last meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, this is the second meeting.
Right, that's right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
On advice, I'm going to recuse myself this evening.
Understand. Thank you, Frank. Frank, we'll recuse on this. Okay, so Henry, do you want to kind of quickly summarize this or do you want me to do it from my memory?
I'm hoping to summarize it if that's okay.
Sure, thank you. If you could just name an address for the record would be great.
Sure. Henry Resnikoff, 85 River Road, F2 Essex, Connecticut, 06426. Name of the company is Guilford Place LLC. This property, I've owned the building since 2000, which I land leased from the Knowles. As many of you may remember, it was a Starbucks for its subsequent users and it's been empty now for almost a year and a half. A major impediment to leasing this property is the inability to have a drive-up or food pickup. This request is to extend, which, which though it is not legal right now in the TS zone, to extend the zone to include this and then to add drive-up, which is already happening in this zone. This particular property, while it's in what's called the historic district, the historic district really is behind the Walmart. It's really not on Route 1. I mean, from a practical view, I think everyone would agree there's nothing on Route 1 in this area that is historic or necessarily attractive. It's just commercial traffic from one end of 55 all the way to exit 57. I'm just trying to pragmatically ask that the commission, they allowed another property to get zoning for this, allow us to get the zoning so we can try to go out and get at least and stop the economic hemorrhage that's going on. That's basically what it is. I know that you're looking at town-wide, a town-wide decision on this. I know it's your decision to make, not anybody else's. I know that you're thinking about it across the board, but the fact is that food pickup and drive-up is going to be part of the future of almost everybody. I know that another developer is wanting, going to want to come in opposite Pinellas for the same request. I know several other people asking for the same request. I'm simply asking for your consideration to let me get going after having lost thousands of dollars, though I pay all my taxes and everything else. That's really what it's about.
So having done my due diligence today, I will say that, you know, in your favor on this application is, I'm not sure it's, I think it's actually a pretty good location for a potential drive-up. You know, it's got a left turn signal. There's a light. I'm not quite sure how you configure the drive-up slash pickup with respect to parking, but that would be for another day. Kind of, my problem with this is, you know, extending the potential drive-through all the way through the TS zone. I mean, if it was just on this one parcel, I mean, I hate to call it spot zoning, but, you know, I, I think this actually isn't a terrible location, but my concern is, you know, while we're in this zoning rewrite and we're looking at everything from a comprehensive standpoint to just act on one parcel and including all the other TS parcels as part of this approval. and including all the other TS parcels as part of this approval. I think it's kind of getting ahead of the process itself. But I I'm put, I'll put it back to other commissioners just to get a sense for how you guys feel to ask any questions that you want and we can proceed from there.
Just a question, Phil, how far does the TS zone go up Route one, you know, towards from Slane?
I
It was all the way.
Probably all the way, all the way up to U-Haul, is that fair?
Yeah, that's all TS, correct.
Thank you.
So this is really just kind of bumping TS, you know, down to parcel. So and then correct me when I'm wrong, Henry. It would be then including the credit union as well as the place and what was Sweet Frog.
And I just might reiterate, the the key part about why this parcel lends itself to what I'm asking is one of the big concerns for any drive-up off of any road is backup of traffic. This is a signal control site, so people have to queue on and they can turn in and off site without creating any traffic jam. And right now, and all of you know this, if you've gone into McDonald's, which has a drive-up, Wendy's, which has a drive-up, Dunkin' Donuts, which has a drive-up, you get massive backup on Route one because there's no way to control it. This site's controlled.
Uh, well, I'll push back a little and say, I've never seen McDonald's backed up. I've never seen Wendy's. I have seen Dunkin' Donuts, but that's
So, so
I've seen all feedbacked up.
Mr. Chair, if I could just state that none of us here are traffic engineers. There has not been an analysis of that site to show that there is adequate space for turning gray AI and things like that to drive through. So just the existence of a stoplight is not
I know. And and again, all of that would come before us in the form of a special permit. So they're not asking for the drive-up now. They're just asking for a zone change.
Right, but it's a it's a speculation for a a potential business that may or may not be suitable for there. And we are being asked to do an entire, an entire zone change to all of the TS zone to include track-throughs. I just, you know,
I hear you.
My first question, though, before I made the the traffic engineer comment is last time we heard this, we talked about the Board of Selectmen was going to weigh in on this. Have we heard from them?
I did go to the Board of Selectmen meeting with George and they specifically said that they will not comment on pending applications. They did talk about drive-throughs as a general statement in Guilford. In my senses, I did not feel a resounding ground swell support for the idea. But again, was not with respect to any one application. It just, I think they would like to understand the impacts of additional traffic in areas that don't have guarded turns. Because again, we'd we'd be potentially opening ourselves up to significantly more traffic and activity on Route one. But that's, that was, am I, am I okay with that summary, George?
Yes, we didn't, we didn't, Jamie, we didn't really ask them to formally take a position on this issue. They they asked us to come to their meeting to discuss a number of topics, including this one. And I think Phil's summary is essentially correct. They recognize it as a as an important issue. There are lots of arguments in favor of liberal, more liberal rules with regard to drive-throughs and there are arguments against it. I think they were glad to pass the pass the decision to the Planning and Zoning Commission. They did not take any kind of position either in favor of the general idea or against it, nor did they take any position specifically with regard to this application.
And I'll also add, Phil, I'm still perplexed as to why the zone change drive-throughs are not allowed currently in either of these zones. So you could put it in the PV and you could put it in the TS via special permit. So the applicant referenced a precedent that this board saw recently, but it was not really the same because we did not change the zone in that location. We just allowed special permits. So just
I'll allow the desire.
If I, the only reason the permit, the application was set up this way is Mr. Crow suggested that I do it this way. Originally, I asked just to add it to the PV zone.
Thank you. So there, that answer your question, Jamie? So, and George, there you go.
Yeah, I mean, it answers my question, but at the same time, I mean, you know, we put in some rules around drive-throughs to mitigate the proliferation of drive-throughs in the TS zone. As you alluded to, Mr. Resnikoff, there is a Wendy's, a Dunkin' Donuts, a McDonald's, three gas stations, all concentrated in this part of Route one. So, you know, I I just, I I take objection to, you know, saying that the PV one, the PV zone is not amenable to this special permit change, but perhaps
I never said that. I originally, when I approached the town, suggested and asked to do it in the PV zone, Mr. Crow suggested to me to ask for the extension of the TS and add it to the TS. That's not what I asked for originally.
Thank you.
And just one other clarification. When we got the permit for the Starbucks, a full traffic study was done, all the turning movements were measured. And that's why the signal is there. There's no other drive-up in town with a fully signaled intersection except Panera.
Hi, any other questions from commissioners? Any questions from the public with respect to this, these two applications? Would anyone like to speak in favor or speak against this application from the public? Again, if your video is off, I can't see if your hand is up, so I'm going to assume that there's no one that would like to speak in favor or against. Would someone like to make a motion to close?
Are you close, you're closing both of these hearings, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott. I'll call the vote. Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
I will also vote to close. We'll act on this this evening. Next item is two one five eight.
Thank you for your time.
Certainly, thank you. Two one five eight BPR LLC, two one five eight Boston Post Road, map seventy-eight lot nine, zone R five and Z R eight, special permit request per section two seventy-three thirty-six A to construct thirty by ninety-six foot greenhouse and a sixty
We got continued that hearing.
Those are those, those will be content, that one's continued to eleven three as is the application for Mark and Julie Haight, six fifty-one Clabber Hill Road that will also be continued to the third of November. Next item is Kelly Streeter, one nine six Whitfield Street, map thirty-three, lot eleven, zone R one, special permit for additional lot coverage for certain structures. Russ, tell us what certain structures are and please name and address for the record, please.
Somebody want to text Frank?
I'm Russell Campaign with CK Architects, one three one Boston Street, Guilford. And I'm representing Kelly Streeter, who is the owner and occupant of one ninety-six Whitfield Street. And Mike Harkin is also in attendance. He has done the civil and septic work on this proposal. Okay, so to to give you a little bit of description, I'm applying for a special permit under two seventy-three dash thirty-seven, additional lot coverage for certain structures under the R one and R two districts, which this resides in. So I think the idea behind this particular special permit, which we've sought on several projects, is that the R one and R two has the most restrictive lot coverage in the town's regulations. So it's fifteen percent lot coverage. And so this clause was added to allow for some additional lot coverage for items that aren't as bulky or massive as a full structure. And so what this covers is items like decks, tennis courts and swimming pools. And so on this particular property, which the site plan you're seeing now has the main house, which is referred to as the dollhouse in front, has an existing red historic barn that's set back. We're looking to put a new side porch on, a new deck in the back that's in blue with a hot tub, a screen porch and then a pool to the rear of the property. And so we're we're over the lot coverage of that fifteen percent on this. And so we're looking to have the pool and the deck, which falls clearly under this category to be accounted under this additional lot coverage as items that don't have the same significance as a building. And what that'll allow us to do is have enough lot coverage for a screen porch, a pool house associated with a pool and the existing structures on the property. Mike Harkin has done a septic analysis and B one hundred A, and that is all been approved and and is is deemed adequate. That is one of the criteria of the special permit. And in full disclosure, we also have indicated a reserve area that we're keeping for a potential in-law apartment and septic area. We're not planning to pursue that. It's just a master plan, something that we wanted to show in full disclosure as to what might happen on the property in the future. And the other thing I should show you with the very rear of the property, when we originally submitted, we are intending to pursue a new greenhouse and some raised planting beds. Because there hasn't been a resolution as to whether we can get an administrative approval through Kevin McGee or whether we have to go to inland wetlands and get a formal approval that's been sort of in limbo for a couple of months now. We decided to just remove the greenhouse from this site plan so we could actually present it to you. It has no impact or bearing on the elements that we're looking to account for under the ten percent additional lot coverage. Just as sort of context for that, there's a pond that's two properties away, all mowed lawn between us and them. And that's why there's a little bit of debate whether it warrants a formal application for a greenhouse or whether we can get an administrative approval. But Mike Harkin is planning to go to inland wetlands next week and have a determination made on that, so it hopefully will be able to fall in line. But as I said, it's kind of separate from the application before you tonight, so we've just removed it and and doesn't impact the special permit request that we're making for these elements. So are there any questions or or concerns? Do you want me to go through the architectural aspects of it?
Sure, let's let's just go through it quick. I can scroll through if you want. I'll go down. These look like the
So that's the the deck and then the screen porch addition on the rear on, so that portion is the deck, yep.
And and this is obviously the roof.
That's the roof. Most of that is existing and just the element that juts out toward the rear is new. And that, that again, is not being categorized under this, only the only the open deck is.
Got it. And and just with, is the fire pit area considered impervious and coverage?
Just, uh, well, this coverage is not about impervious surface like on a commercial project. This is coverage associated with with building structure coverage. And so, no, that's an at-grade patio. So this is the new pool house and pool that's in the rear. We are building the grades up slightly, about thirty inches to set the pool above the floodline. And therefore, the pool house can be built without being below the flood. We just are doing this as a prudent measure. I don't think it has much impact. There's plenty of yard to transition the grades up that thirty inches. But it's, I think, just a, you know, measure of of insurance against flooding.
And then just some architectural renderings? And maybe, George, you can weigh in. Normally, a coverage change like this in in other zones would go to ZVA. But it was a decision was made that in the R one and R two zones, you could add additional coverage via the special permit. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. When the the zoning was originally written with respect to these coverage requirements, the commission at the time felt that they should make a more liberal allowance in the R one zone for additional coverage for certain types of structures. And that's the provision under which this application falls. I think you're allowed to have a ten percent additional coverage. And that's, that's the provision that this application is pursuant to. It's only only in the R one zone is this permitted and R two, R one and R two zones.
So, um, so I will convey, so that means that it doesn't require hardship associated with the application. It's a special permit, so it can be based on on it meeting these standards as a special permit. And I also will note, you know, it's unusual for the smallest lot size to have the lowest percentage lot coverage. I know of no other zoning but Guilfords that actually makes the smallest properties have the least amount of coverage on them. So this is obviously a reaction to that. Usually, it's the other way around, where where the larger the lot, the lower the lot coverage. And so this brings it to a twenty-five percent lot coverage, which is much more in keeping with the smaller shoreline lots of of Madison and Guilford, you know, so I think that's the reasoning behind it.
And George, have we received any positive or negative communication from, so one of the things that we're supposed to be evaluating is whether or not this is impactful upon abutting neighbors. And obviously, it's behind the house. I don't think there are any views that are impacted from this, but do we have any other communication with respect to that?
I don't, I don't believe so. I'll defer to Lisa if she if she's aware of anything that we received. I don't think so.
No.
She just called down the hall.
Phil, I think we did get a, the first time we heard about this, I think there was a letter from a neighbor about construction workers parking on the street and causing some difficult traffic congestion.
We did. It wasn't really related to the the issue at hand. It had to do, I don't know if that was construction on this property or not. But yeah, it did really relate to the issue that you're dealing with.
So there was some interior renovations being done that weren't, obviously, didn't need this approval, so there was a kitchen renovation going on. I didn't hear of that. I do think we'll be able to stage much more parking on the property, given that we're going to be accessing the backyard and such. It is a very tight access, though. I will also not note that one of the things that historically this property had a subdivided rear interior lot that this investment that's being made with the pool and such is going to actually sort of negate the ability for that ever to be pursued. So I do think that that is worth noting because there was a proposal that the previous, or actually two previous owners had a proposal, I think, that was approved to have a a building, a separate building put back there. So that obviously is is being negated by these, the structures and our lot coverage worth noting.
Just, just give everyone some perspective on this. I'm just going to do this quick. This is on Whitfield Street. There's a, here's the pond that Russ was making reference to. It goes along with this house. It's right across from Norton. I mean, so you
The question is, are trees being taken down?
Trees have already been taken down. So there was one very old tree that was overhanging in the house that was taken down, not really a part of this. And I believe one other tree was taken down for septic expansion. But it's, yeah, there's still, the property line trees are not being taken down and, you know, it still is a, there's five or six, you know, hundred-year-old trees still on the property.
Sorry, just jumping in with that screen share. So are there any questions from commissioners with respect to this application? Are there any questions from the public with respect to this application? Would anyone like to speak in favor or against this application? Russ, as you know, we have a two-meeting requirement for a special permit. I know you don't like that, but we almost always waive them. I'm comfortable waiving the second meeting for the special permit if other commissioners are also in favor of that. Would anyone like to comment with respect to that?
I'm in favor of that.
Thank you.
Bill Freeman?
I'd agree to that.
All right. Would someone like to make a motion to waive the second public hearing then?
So moved.
I'll call the vote. Sean Cosgrove?
Aye.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Aye.
Bill Freeman?
Yes.
I will also vote. We'll act on this site tonight.
Move, move to close.
Thank you.
Public hearing.
Someone like the second Scott's motion to close.
Second.
Okay, album to close. Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Aye.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Amy Stein.
Yes.
Tom Cosgrove.
Aye.
Russ will act on this shortly.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there was a letter from Kevin McGee.
Oh, there was a letter. Uh, someone like to make a, let's see if we can find that. One second.
I've got it in front of me.
If you could, uh, someone make a motion to reopen?
Make a motion to reopen so that John can read the letter from Mr. McGee.
I show, I show of hands, are we consent to reopen and then close? Thank you. Good.
From Kevin McGee, environmental planner regarding Kelly Streeter, 196 Whitfield Street, Connecticut Assessor, Lot 33, uh, map 33, Lot 11. The applicant is proposing to expand the existing deck and construct an in-ground swimming pool with a pool house. Um, the proposed site grading is adjacent to the inland wetlands commission 100-foot regulated review area. The plans for the project have sedimentation and erosion control procedures that are in compliance with 273-97B subsection six of the zoning regulations. We will never make sure that the natural resources are protected. I recommend the following conditions of approval. Silk fence and/or hay bales shall be properly installed outside of the wetlands commission regulated review area. Town Guilford zoning enforcement officers shall be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to any site work. Soil stockpile should be contained by silk fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement. It's not period. It's kind of the officer.
Good. Russ, you okay with those?
Um, yes.
Did we do the, um, one from Sonia Marino?
I don't see one from Sonia.
See one from her.
Yeah, do you want me to get one? I have it here.
For the record, it's, it's Michael Harkin. Um, Sonia did submit a letter. I was in there today and made sure that it was put into the file. Uh, basically the pool house connection required a state health department approval and exception. So we did get that for this project. Russ had stated that earlier, but we do have full state and local approval for the pool house.
Terrific. Um, would someone like to make a motion to reclose? I don't, I haven't said that before.
Make a motion that we reclose.
Hey, Bill, uh, Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Jamie Stein.
Sorry, yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Aye.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
And I will also vote. Russ, sorry about the confusion there. We will act on this this evening. Next item on our agenda is, uh, George Verba, 763 Mulberry Point Road, map 10, Lot 131, Zone R2, coastal site plan for installation of an elevator within 100 feet of the coastal resources. Mr. Verba, you've been waiting patiently. Is, are you presenting on your own behalf or is someone here for you?
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
And Mr. Verba, can I interr- interrupt for a second? Phil, before you, before you beat me to the punch, opening the, uh, the plans, um, when Mr. Verba is done with his introduction, give, give me a chance to see if I can figure out how to do it.
Okay.
George, George, if you could just state your, uh, even though I just read it, if you could state your name and address for the record, that would be.
Uh, George Verba, professional engineer, 763 Mulberry Point Road.
Terrific.
So if George can't manage, I have my own presentation, which I can do. Yeah, file, so, but hopefully it should work because I could see all these official drawings.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to open it, George. If it doesn't work, Phil can help me out here.
That's it.
Is that it? Okay, good.
Except we have to rotate it because you are now seeing.
We, we, I think we've squeezed about as much out of George as we're gonna get tonight, so.
You should be able to just right-click.
Okay, let's just move it up and up. That is a side. Okay. Uh, this is unfortunately the first site plan. It doesn't show the revision. There should be, isn't, uh, obviously you don't have the second one there, but it's not serious. Uh, basically this is Mulberry Point Road. This is our existing house here. And we are planning a little addition at the back to accommodate an elevator. Uh, both my wife and myself, we're now, I'm over 80, she's just getting there. And we are having trouble getting up the stair. So, uh, not serious, but I mean, it's something that we want to, uh, make sure that we can do that. But in 2018, we went to the zoning board of appeals and we got a variance uh, to allow us an additional 1% coverage. In other words, from 15% up to 16%. And that basically this addition is 98 square feet. Uh, and, uh, extends, um, uh, eight foot by 12 foot. So it's quite small. The, uh, it is way out of the, uh, for any flood area. The Long Island Sound is here. Uh, if you look at the FEMA map, you will see, see that the zone of, uh, moderate wave action is, is actually drawn somewhere here. Uh, but it's incorrectly drawn because we're much higher than, uh, it should probably be down there somewhere. Uh, we also, in, when we put this, we have a tree here, a weeping hemlock. So it's a confined space. We're gonna dig the foundations by hand. I don't want the machine there because we don't want to ruin the hemlock, nor do we want to ruin our existing foundation. Under this area, we have two systems, 12,000 square, uh, 1,200 square feet, which collect presently the rainwater. And then from then, if, if, if they're full, the rainwater gets discharged to a dry well here. So we are not having any runoff into Long Island Sound directly. Also, our driveway consists out of, uh, pervious stone paving. So when you put water on this, it never runs off. It just disappears into the ground. So we're asking the commission to please, uh, approve this for us. Uh, there are no negative impacts from this, uh, construction here on the coastal resources. I mean, you cannot see it. You cannot even see it from the earth because all of this is being, is, there are trees here. I mean, I could show you this on my own, uh, pictures if you want to see it. And, uh, so that's really all I have to say. This, so we are hoping that, uh, your, the commission will approve this. Thank you.
Certainly. I think we have a couple of memos, um, from the town staff, which I will. George, you want to try and share them? You want me to pull them up?
You can do it.
Okay, thanks. Uh, so let's see, who hasn't read yet tonight? Bill Freeman, how about you grab the one from Sonia?
If you bring it up, I'd be glad to read it.
Try, yes. Can you see it?
Yes. They just have to wait for the thing to get out of the way there. To planning and zoning from Sonia Maria RS and PH dated October 6th, 2021, RE 763 Mulberry Point Road, map 10, Lot 131. Building addition request is for an elevator, not on the same side as the subsurface, sub-surface sewage disposal system, SSDS. The building application will be approved by the health department.
Thank you. Um, Sean, why don't you grab the one from Kevin McGee, just now coming up?
Yep, I've got it. Dear October 5th, uh, Kevin McGee, environmental planner, coastal area management review, George Verba, um, 763 Mulberry Point Road, Connecticut, 647 assessment map 10, 31. The application, the applicant is proposing for 96 square, for a 90 square, 96 square foot elevator. The property is located in a FEMA zone, VE elevation 14 and FEMA zone AE flood zone. The coastal resource policies applicable for the property are coastal hazard area, coastal water, shorelands, rocky shorefront and beaches. Site plan provides for erosion and sedimentation, sedimentation control measures that are designed to protect the adjacent coastal resources. The work being conducted could have a better impact on the adjacent coastal resources if the origin and sedimentation control measures are not properly installed and maintained. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. The town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to site construction. Soil stockpiles should be contained by silk fencing and/or hay bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable materials installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Number two, the site should be inspected daily to make sure that all construction debris has been properly disposed of in a covered dumpster.
Thank you. Um, so here's a, um, question. Jamie, you want to read in this? It looks like correspondence. Is that correct?
Sure, yep. Uh, planning and zoning from Susan Ward, uh, sent Tuesday, October 5th this year. Uh, subject is question about elevator install at 763 Mulberry Point Road. Will there be noise from the operation of the elevator once it is installed? Uh, hi all, this is Susan Merkel Ward at 760 Mulberry Point Road. We live across the street from George and Elizabeth Verba, 763 Mulberry Point Road. George mentioned that they are going to install an elevator on the front of the house and that there was a meeting at P&amp;Z on October 6th. I just wanted to know if the elevator would have an external noise when in operation. I am not sure if we will be able to attend the meeting tomorrow, so I wanted to check in to see what the noise level would be like. We often sit slash eat outside as much as possible and hope that the noise from the elevator would not be intrusive, et cetera. The Verbas are good neighbors and it sounds like the elevator is a good idea for them. But we are curious about any impact from noise slash general operation of the elevator once installed. My best, Susan. Yeah.
Um, George, I, I haven't been in many noisy elevators, but do you want to comment on that?
Uh, yes, I would like to comment if I can get onto this.
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, uh, there obviously will not be any noise or big outside the, the building because, uh, uh, these, uh, uh, home elevators are very quiet. Uh, typically they are, uh, not like commercial, uh, industrial elevators. Also, you must realize we are 40, 36 or 37 feet away from, from the road boundary. And to Susan and Annie's house, we are probably, if I look at this, maybe 120 feet. So this is not something that they need to worry about. But in any case, the, the, the walls will be properly insulated. Uh, and, uh, uh, typically, uh, we, we're gonna cover the outside of, obviously with plywood and then with shingles. And the inside we have the insulation. So I don't think there will be any abnormal noise coming from this.
Thank you.
And we will certainly, uh, make sure that they are not inconvenienced.
Terrific. Thank you for your courtesy to your neighbors and for your thoughtful response.
We have a very nice community. Uh, I couldn't think of a better area to, to live, really.
Any questions from commissioners?
I just have one. George, do you have a generator?
Yes.
Good.
We, we, we are just got it installed, uh, and it will be put into operation tomorrow. And then we can relax here because, you know, you cannot lose power because it becomes life threatening, especially winter.
You don't want to be stuck in the elevator.
There's batteries in those elevators, so they always work.
Um, any, any other questions from commissioners? This is obviously just, um, a CAM, a coastal site plan. Any comments or questions from the public? Would someone like to make a motion to close?
So moved.
Sean Cosgrove.
Aye.
Jamie Stein.
Yes.
Scott Edmund.
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea.
Yes.
Bill Freeman.
Yes.
Also at the close, we will act on your application tonight. Uh, stay tuned. Hopefully we won't be too long. Next on our agenda, Christopher Healy, Boston Post Road, map 78, Lot 13, Zone TS-2 and R8, petition for zone boundary change. I suspect that attorney Beatty is here for this application. If you could state your name and address for the record, that would be sincerely appreciated.
Your suspicion is correct, Mr. Johnston. The, uh, my name is Jeffrey Beatty, uh, 705 Boston Post Road, Guilford, Connecticut. And you'll have to excuse my voice. I was, uh, at a sporting event yelling rather loudly and I haven't done that in a long, long time. It had more of an impact on my voice.
Were you, were you possibly at Fenway?
I was, yes.
Good for you.
Yeah. I hope, I hope.
Too bad your Yankees lost.
I, I, I hope it doesn't affect me one way or the other with any of the commissioners with regard to this application. So, so I'm here on behalf of my client, Christopher Healy, who, um, has submitted this application with regard to the property on the Boston Post Road, assessors map 78, Lot 13. Um, and it's the, uh, property that's located between, it's on the south side of Route 1, located between the Red Roof, um, Hotel and the Car Care Clinic. It's an undeveloped parcel of land.
I have a map if you'd like to look at it, if you give me a chance to see if I can get that up, Phil.
Or go for it, George. Um, if you can't do it, I got you covered.
Is this it? Yep. Can you see it?
Yep, that's, that's one of them. Yep.
This is the, this is the most, uh, most important one, the most, the most meaningful one.
Yep. And so you can see, uh, the parcel that's cross-hatched is the one we're discussing. And you can see from the cer- the map that the portion that's closest to Boston Post Road, kind of the, the handle of the piece, if you want to think of it that way, is located in the R8 zone. Uh, the portion that's below that, uh, where the letter A is, uh, prominent, that's located in the TS2 zone.
No, Jeff.
Maybe the other way around, Jeff.
I'm gonna give the way, my, my apologies. My apologies.
Said that earlier, Jeff. That's not, yeah, you've got to reverse, right?
Yep, my apologies. And so what we want to do is.
Reverse on the drawing too, actually. That's okay.
Right, that, that's probably leading to my confusion. So what we want to have is the entire parcel located in the TS2 zone. So we're requesting that the map be, uh, amended to change the boundary line of the zone to incorporate the entire parcel rather, rather than dividing it in half or splitting it. It's not now splitting the parcel.
Just to be clear, the yellow color, uh, is the TS zone.
Right, so the lower portion, it's the, sort of the end part is the, uh, R8.
Right, the TS, the TS zone, as you know, is a commercial zone.
Right.
And then we submitted.
It's actually the TS2 zone, excuse me, not to be confused with the other TS zone we were talking about earlier.
Okay.
Apologize for the confusion. The, um, the, the, we submitted a site plan, gives an idea as to what the proposed development of the site would be, should this change to the, um, map be approved by the commission. And that would be to have a, a commercial building towards the front of the parcel closer to Boston Post Road, and then residential development at the rear of the parcel. It's a, the parcel itself is a little over five, uh, acres. And, and that, that's what the plan would be. Obviously, we need to come back before the commission for approvals of any, uh, further development of the site is the initial step to allow us to proceed with that proposed development.
Just to be, just to be clear, this application also, uh, because it's a zone map amendment, requires a second public hearing.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, George, in our zoning rewrite, don't we have the ability to have applications submitted to us with plans a- associated with future development?
Yes, we are, we are proposing, uh, as the commission knows, I think we discussed it at our, at our last meeting, to create a new zoning district which will allow for rezoning specific to a particular. to a particular use and site plan. I think I'd forgotten what the terminology that Glenn used to describe that new zone, but I'm sure you all remember that discussion from the last time we met with him a couple weeks ago. That would enable you to rezone property, but only for a specific use based on a specific piece of property.
The planned development district.
Yeah, that's it. Thanks, Jamie.
So part of the, the concern we always bump up against Jeff is that, you know, if we approve it, there's a whole series of uses, some of which are by right and some of which would be by special permit that are more impactful than just a residential zone. And we can't contingently approve something and say, okay, well, we'll approve it, but only if you say you're gonna do this. So it's kind of a little bit of potentially letting the genie out of the bottle on the back half of the property. I'd say that just from experience because we've had a number of applications. We had an application across the street, which was probably a little more impactful because they wanted to convert, again, you know, their split piece of property and the residential neighbors behind them were not in favor of that. The big piece of, the big parcel to the left of the, the rear piece on your property, I think is Land Conservation Trust. Is that correct, George?
That is correct.
Yes, yes, yes.
So I, you know.
Phil, isn't the, the other piece of property next to it, didn't we see an application for that recently?
We did, we did.
Is that the Rocky O property with, with, that was changed?
Yes.
Yeah, that is, we didn't, we don't have a dissolved plant for that, but we did rezone it, right?
Yes. And what, George, can you remind me what we resoned it to?
We resoned it to the M U C or M U C two, whatever the adjacent zone is to the south and not, not to the T S zone. And that the developer of that property was contemplating developing multi-family housing and, and still is, we don't have an application yet, but that is, that is in the works, supposedly.
They put some letter in that stated that if it wasn't used for the intended purpose, it would go back to the previous zone.
Uh, they, they did make a statement to that effect, yes.
It was, it was, it was a very steeply sloped property. So they, they love the land that was part of the lot was not usable.
Yeah.
I think that's correct. I'm gonna just quickly, George, I'm gonna jump on your screen share here for a sec.
All right, I'll, I'll stop sharing this one.
So here, here is the, the property itself again, but it's, this is Boston Post Road over here and then it goes deep. This is currently the T S two, correct, George?
Yes.
And then this is R eight and.
And Phil, is there any commercial operation on that lot now?
I don't believe so. I believe it's vague. Confusion I had was in reading the announcement, it doesn't have a number on Boston Post Road. And I guess when they're not developed, they're not numbered. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be pretty near Anthony's.
It's right next to bed roof.
Near what?
I, I, I think the Car Care Clinic is to the north of there.
Across from Rocko's.
That's, that's correct. And.
Right.
So in the larger parcel, the Red Roof Inn is to the east. If you look at the navigational arrow on the north and the upper left-hand corner of the survey. Uh, the Red Roof Inn is to the, to the east of this parcel. Car Care Clinic is to the west.
Jeff, if you don't mind, I'll hop in with another screen share for a sec.
Not at all, go ahead.
Good idea, Phil.
Uh, so did I, can you guys still see? Sorry. Can you see the full screen share now?
No, I see the guy.
That's my dad. Sorry.
There you go.
So here's, here's, here's the Red Roof. Here is Car Care.
Oh, and there it is. Okay.
For lack of better, you know, it's got a down, goes out, goes down.
So ob- obviously, there's gonna be a lot of tree clearing.
Right. If, if the site's developed, yes, there will be.
And is the, so, you know, this is jumping the question, but what can you even give us a hint as to what kind of commercial property is contemplated for?
I, I can, I, I don't know what the type of per, personal or convert, commercial property is going to be, but I can, I, there's a site plan that we submitted that shows the potential design that my clients were contemplating for this.
We don't, um, I think we lost that site, Jeff. We don't have that in our file.
Okay.
I, I know we're gonna have another hearing on this, so we'll make sure we have that for you, for the commission at the next meeting.
That'd be fine.
Um, let me stop with this and we'll go back to everyone in person. Obviously, we have to have a second meeting on this, Jeff, so I'm gonna move this along and let people contemplate if they have any questions between now and our next meeting. Do you have anything more you'd like to add?
The only thing I might add is that I'll use the time in the, in the interim to speak with my client to maybe get a better ideas to the type of development they propose to, to do so they can report back to the commission with their response.
One of the, one of the things I think this has in favor of it versus other applications that are, that are similar, that I don't really think you're running up against residential neighborhoods. It looks pretty rustic back there. So I don't think it would be impactful upon other neighbors for potential commercial concerns. So.
I agree. And I, I did send the notice, we sent the notice out to the neighbors within the hundred-foot distance of the proposed change. And at least as of today, I haven't received any responses from any of the neighbors with any objection or for that matter in favor of it, just to be fair.
Great. Um, so in the.
You want to hit the letter from Kevin or you want to?
Yeah, hit the letter, please.
All right, I could take as I have it up. It's, um, I dated October 5th, twenty twenty-one to Guilford Planning and Zoning from Kevin McGee, environmental planner on the proposed zone change from R eight to T S two, Boston Post Road Assessor map seventy-eight lot thirteen. I am against the proposed zone for the southern portion of the property located at Boston Post Road Assessor's map seventy-eight lot thirteen from the R eight to the T S two. The proposed zone change would be harmful to the environment with the rear portion of the property sloping towards the adjacent significant wetland system of Wolf Swamp in Holdley Creek. The uses in table five of the regulations for the T S two zone that I see are harmful to the significant wetlands area are retail clothes, cleaning and laundering establishments, motor vehicle repair, motor vehicle filling stations, manufacturing, research laboratories, warehouses, excluding trucking terminals and building landscape contractor facilities. The town of Guilford Natural Resource Inventory and Assessment published in January of two thousand and five noted this area of wetlands, which is located south and west of the zone change on the Guilford Land Conservation Trust property as a significant wetlands. Rezoning the importance, oh, recognizing.
Yeah.
Recognizing the importance of the wetlands complex, the Natural Resource Inventory recommended an intact three hundred-foot uplands buffer around the significant wetlands, keeping the southern section of the property as residential helps to maintain a buffer adjacent to the significant wetlands.
But that could be something that Jeff's client could consider.
Yeah, Jeff, maybe if, if, um, they could take a peek at the letter that was submitted by the applicant for the adjacent property that might give a level of comfort to the commission.
Great.
Should, should he consider the M U C two? Similar to what we just did on the adjacent property?
Uh, I think George could probably advise you as to whether or not that's a prudent plan or not.
Uh, I hadn't really thought about it, but I, I think that's a possibility. Yep. I mean, it wouldn't be, yeah, I guess it would be contiguous, yes, around the back, around the backside of the Red Roof Inn.
Especially that would maintain the T S two along the road and then get the back to where you need it to be for a residential. I mean, the, the dream scenario would be us getting our update to the zoning, but that's probably at this point.
Yeah, I can discuss all that with the applicant.
Yep.
Well, we'll see you hopefully at our November third meeting, Jeff. Would someone like to make a motion to close?
Go move.
Continue.
Continue. My apologies. Continue.
Second.
Sean, Sean Cosgrove?
I.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
I.
Phil Freeman?
Yes.
I will continue. Uh, and we'll see you on the third of November.
Thank you very much for your time.
Hey, Phil?
Yes.
Memo from Sonia.
We could, can, can we include it in our next meeting, please?
We certainly can.
Thank you. All right, I, I only do one reopen a night.
Okay, yeah.
Joseph and Darlene DeRosa, seven one eight Mulberry Point Road, map ten lot eighteen, zone R two coastal site plan for a twelve by sixteen shed. When this, when the zoning code rewrite comes through, you would not have, probably would not have to come to us for this. This would be an administrative approval, but right now, we're gonna try and make it as painless as possible for you. Could you please state your name and address for the record and let's go?
Joe DeRosa, seven eighteen Mulberry Point Road. I'm gonna make this as painless for you. I just want to.
We appreciate that.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, that's it.
This is, all right, what do we got? We got any memos?
There's a plan.
Can you zoom in, George?
Make it bigger. Yeah. That, is that better?
Yeah, so it's thirty, thirty-eight feet from Marshall Ave and fourteen feet from uh, my neighbor's property, so it's fine with all the setbacks.
Great. Um, I assume we have some memos from town staff?
We do, from Sonia Moreno.
If you could field that one, that would be great, Sean.
To planning and zoning, Sonia Moreno, R S M P H, October sixth, twenty twenty-one, zoning team, Mulberry Point Road. Map ten lot eighteen shed, less than two hundred square feet and not on a permanent foundation. B one hundred A is not applicable and the health department does not need to approve the application. The recommendation is to have at least five feet between the sub-surface sewage disposal system and any structure. But it only, but it's only a recommendation.
Okay.
And then there's one from Kevin McGee too.
There's also a, a letter from a budding neighbor. Bill, I'll put it up on the screen. You want to take, this is seven one eight, right? Bill, I'll have you take this one because I believe.
Sure. From Scott Singer, sent on October fifth, twenty twenty-one to Lisa Pambino, seven one eight Mulberry Point Road, Joseph and Darlene DeRosa coastal site plan Guilford P Z C meeting six October twenty twenty-one. Dear Lisa, as an impacted neighbor, I've met with the applicant and walked the site. I support their application and believe a twelve by sixteen shed at the proposed location is of appropriate scale and consistent with the neighborhood of Mulberry Point. Regards, Scott Singer.
Thank you very much. I think here's another one, uh, did, from Sonia Moreno. Did you read that one already, Sean?
Yes, there's one from Scott.
Uh, there's one from.
Or Kevin.
Remember Kevin.
Frank, why don't you grab the one from Kevin? I'll pull it up. Hold on.
I got it. You're all set. From Kevin McGee, environmental planner, October fifth, twenty twenty-one coastal area management review, Joseph and Darlene DeRosa, seven eighteen Mulberry Point Road Assessor map ten lot eighteen Guilford, Connecticut, zero six four three seven. The applicant is proposing to install a twelve-foot by sixteen-foot shed set on a stone pad approximately sixty-five feet from tidal wetland. Stormwater will be infiltrated through the stone pad, which will be extended one foot beyond the drip line of the roof. The property is located just outside of the FEMA zone, A E elevation twelve flood zone. The coastal resource policies applicable for the property are shorelands and tidal wetlands. The site plan does not provide for erosion and sedimentation control measures. The work being conducted should have minor impact on the adjacent coastal resources if the erosion and sedimentation control measures are not properly installed and maintained. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, any soil being excavated for the installation of the shed shall be placed in a truck and removed from the property. The crushed stone should be placed in the excavated area the same day of the site grading.
Does that make sense, Joe?
Yep.
Great. Stop the share. I don't believe you have anything else. Are there any questions from commissioners with respect to the application? Any comments or questions from the public? Either in for or against? In for, how about just for or against? Okay, would someone like to make a motion to close?
Make a motion to close?
Yep.
Second.
Thank you. Call the vote, Sean Cosgrove?
I.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Affirmative.
Phil Freeman?
Yes.
I shall also make the call. We will act on your application tonight, Joe. If you want to stick around, you can wait for it, but I have a good feeling about this one for you.
Thank you.
Francis Slater and Michael Poole, five three, there's a lot going on in Mulberry Point, five three Mulberry Point Road, map sixteen, lot fifty-seven dash one, zone R five coastal site plan for a small addition. What are we looking at and who's here to speak for them? Will, I think that's you, right?
Yes, sir.
If you could state your name and address for the record, that would be much appreciated.
Uh, Will Thompson, architect, twenty-eight South Fair Street, Guilford. I'm here on behalf of Francis Slater and Michael Poole for their property at five fifty-three Mulberry Point. Um, can we bring, do you want me to bring up the sheets or?
I got it. I got the site plan.
Okay, um, it would actually be helpful to pull up the architectural.
You want that first?
Yes, please.
Okay.
If you can go to the second to last sheet.
Um, you'll have to tell me when to stop.
Just go all the way down. That one will work.
Okay.
Okay, so. I'm sorry.
Is it big enough?
You know, just go up one sheet, it'll show the whole site. Go to page fourteen. There you go. So if we look at this, this is based on a, a survey by Tom Stevens's office. Down sheet on the lower right is where Mulberry Point Road is. Where your hand is right now is where the wetland inland inlet is to the cove. The house itself is elevated. It starts at about twenty-four foot elevation. Um, if you can go to the next sheet, which is a blow up. So when we're looking at this, we have the existing house and on the up sheet side of it is a small addition, right, right below where it says fourteen foot six. That rear rectangle is a proposed addition. It, it's approximately six foot four by twenty-six three. It's gonna be set on three piers. Um, so that's the only impact into the soil. The erosion control measure shown, you can see that green dotted line, that's silt fence all in the down slope area. And that green hashed area is a track pad for entrance and exit during construction. The proposed addition basically enlarges the first floor kitchen and mudroom and then enlarge two existing upstairs bedrooms above. It represents about a hundred and seventy-eight square feet of new roof, which is a very minimal runoff of fifteen cubic feet for the first inch. So I'm proposing we use the rear yard as a level spreader rather than add more structure. Um, I have photos of that if it would help you, but I, I think it's pretty apparent. The other thing I should mention is the existing septic, uh, there's no proposed changes at this time, but we did perform a design for up to a four-bedroom system, which on the upper right of this page, that green area is a reserve area that would accommodate is a reserve area that would accommodate that, which we, we walked through, um, with the health department prior to this application. At this time, we're not adding any bedrooms. Um, this was just to explore if, if the owner were, want to do that at a later date. Um, that's, that's in a nutshell what's proposed. If you'd like me to go through elevations, we can.
Um, let me just, uh, just for everyone's benefit, let me just quickly, um, could do this, George. So this is, uh, again, Google Earth and Mulberry, this Mulberry Point, here's the beach. Now, as you come down Mulberry Point Road, the, the home is here, just so everyone has a sense of what and where we're talking.
And it's up on a pretty strong rise and then it's fairly level once you're up at the level where the house is.
Terrific.
This is just before Indian Cove, right?
Yes, sir. It's right before the fort. You see the fort between Mulberry and Indian Cove.
Yep.
Actually has nice views.
Terrific. I, um, other, any, I'm sure we have some memos, so why don't we see if we can pull those up?
One from Sonia.
Gotta grab the one from Sonia, Sean.
Sure, plenty of zone two, plenty of zoning, Sonia Marino, RS MPH, October sixth to twenty twenty one. Five five three Mulberry Point Road, map sixteen lot fifty seven dash one, the B one hundred A application for the above listed property is approved. The application meets the requirements of nineteen dash three dash B one hundred A. Both complying area was identified on the property and the building addition meets required separation distances. Final approvals contingent on installation of a code complying leaching system. The septic leaching system is to be installed in accordance to engineering plan designed by Tom Stevens PE dated February second, twenty twenty one. Last revised July eighth, twenty twenty one. A permit to construct is required to be submitted by a licensed septic installer before installation of the leaching system and as built and as built of the system installed is required after the completion of the project.
Um, sir, I believe that was when we were proposing a, an additional bedroom.
Yeah.
That, that.
Not proposing now.
Right. So this.
So we don't plan any changes to the septic system.
Right. This was all based on, you're, you're surveying the, the increased septic system.
Note to self, Will, if you, when you decide to add a bedroom, you've got the memo to, to refer to, so.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, Jamie, why don't you grab the one from Kevin McGee? I'll share if you want.
Sure, if you could, thanks.
There you go.
Uh, October fifth, twenty twenty one to Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission from Kevin McGee, environmental planner. Regarding coastal area management review for Francis Slater and Michael Poole. Five fifty three Mulberry Point Road, Guilford, Connecticut, zero six four three seven assessor map sixteen lot fifty seven dash one. The applicant is proposing to install an addition set on three piers. The coastal resource policies applicable for the property are coastal hazard area, bluffs and escarpments, coastal waters, intertidal flats, rocky shorefront and tidal wetlands. The site plan provides for erosion and sedimentation control measures that are designed to protect the adjacent coastal resources. The work being conducted could have a minor impact on the adjacent coastal resources if the erosion and sedimentation control measures are not properly installed and maintained. In order to make sure that the coastal resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. Number one, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measures prior to site construction. Soil stockpile should be contained by silt fencing and/or he bales. Soil erosion and sedimentation control measures shall be maintained until vegetation is established or suitable material is installed to the satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. Number two, the site should be inspected daily to make sure that all construction debris has been properly disposed of in a covered dumpster.
Um, Will, um, having heard about the difficulty of getting covered dumpsters, can you just make sure that the dumpster in some capacity, either has a tarp or some, um, you know, mechanism whereby debris is not just flying out?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sure, uh, Mr. Weedy can keep it covered. He's a very responsible contractor.
Yes, absolutely. Um, any other questions from the commission with respect to this application? Any comments or questions from the public? Would someone like to make a motion to close?
Go move.
Thank you. Would someone like the second call?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, I'll vote to close. Phil Freeman?
Yes.
Thank you. Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Amy Stein, great. Uh, Will will act on this shortly. Um.
Very own.
Uh, next item is Yale New Haven Hospital, Inc., one two five Goose Lane, map seventy five lot thirteen. Zone C two site plan application to install emergency generators, cabinets, below grade duct banks and relocate fire access to the rear of the building. Someone here to present on behalf of Yale New Haven Hospital, Inc.
Yeah, this is, this is Jan Greenwood from Woodard and Curran. I'm a professional engineer and our office is at two thirteen Court Street, Middletown. Also with me tonight is, uh, Tony Grass, so representing the owner. Um. First, I just wanted to point out that the address is one eleven Goose Lane. You've got it down as one twenty five. I don't know if that's important to, to correct.
We'll just note the correction. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so, um, the, um, the, the project is to replace an undersized generator with a larger or two larger generators, um, that, that the hospital feels that they need. This is, um, this project went before the inland wetlands commission and it received approval because it's located, uh, close to an unnamed pond. When the building was originally constructed, um, the, um, jurisdiction of the inland wetlands commission was only fifty feet from the edge of the pond and with these, um, renovations. Now the jurisdiction is a hundred feet, so anything that's done at the back of house falls within a hundred foot, um, distance. So, um, I don't know if you wanted to pull up the plan. We can show you where all of that is going.
I've got your application here. I think the, the plan is.
Is appended to it. I think it's, um.
Yeah, give me a moment. I'll get to it.
Trying to look at. Number twenty six, page number twenty six, I think.
Wow, a lot of pages.
Yeah. Yeah.
Lot NAs, excuse me for this, uh, wheeling through this like this. No, it's here somewhere.
It is.
Getting closer.
The commissioners are looking for a bedtime story to read. You can print this out.
Here's, here's the location. There's a site location. I think everybody knows where that is. And there's some, uh, there's another site location drawing. And there's an aerial photograph, maybe, maybe you could describe that, uh, Jan?
Uh, yeah, you can, uh, the, um, so if you look in the notch on the right-hand side of the, when you see the pond there on the right hand, yeah, that's a pond. So if you go to the left, there's this little white um, on the exterior of the building, that's existing generator. So that's a smaller generator and the new generators are going to go, um, page up, page north in another notch of the building. So if you scroll down, you'll be able to see the, um, uh, the site plan. Uh huh, here we go. We're getting closer. The next one, one more. There you go. Zoom in a little bit. So, uh, so those are the two, uh, new generators that, that you can see.
How's that?
Yeah, there go, okay, so there are two five hundred kilowatt, uh, generators. Um, they, um, the road you see is, is a, um, fire lane that's, um, with grass pavers. That has to be just rerouted around the generators. And everything will be restored after they're, they're constructed. There's not a lot to say about it.
If you want, I'll pull up a quick aerial, just so everyone can get a sense.
I'm curious, um, i- is the fuel source for the generators onsite?
It's underneath the generators. There's, they have belly tanks.
Okay.
So here's, here's the.
And then they're fueled by propane?
Uh, diesel, I believe, right, Tony? Tony, I think you might be on mute.
Yes, it's diesel.
Yeah.
It's diesel, okay.
Yeah, so they're.
And they're basically right here.
Yeah, yes, that's where they will be. I think that's the temporary or is it?
This is just Google Earth, so I don't know. I mean, it was.
It, yeah. I'm trying to see, to count the notches in the building.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's one more notch up. Those are, that's a switchgear right there that you're looking at, those white things is a switchgear. It's the next one, yeah.
Yeah, that's where it is, where Phil's hand is.
Well, right.
Not my hand, but that's, uh, no. All right, um, do we have any memos that we need to read in? Let's see. Sorry.
Big one from Kevin.
You want to grab it, Frank? Since you got it.
Your October fifth, twenty twenty one to Guilford Planning and Zoning from Kevin McGee, our environmental planner. He's referencing Yale New Haven Hospital, one twenty five Goose Lane, Guilford, Connecticut, zero six four three seven assessor map seventy five lot thirteen. So Yale New Haven Hospital is proposing to replace the existing emergency generator with two large, larger generators to be installed on a concrete pad near the northeast corner of the building. The work will also involve the relocation of the quote, grass pave, end quote, fire lane, installation of electrical cabinets and below grade electrical duct bank. The proposed work has a minimal increase in the impervious surface area, which can be treated by infiltration and sheet flow across the lawn. The plans for the project have sedimentation and erosion control procedures that are in compliance with two seventy three dash ninety seven B subsection six of the zoning regulations. Silt fence has been installed around the construction area. The Guilford Inland Wetlands Commission at its September eighth, twenty twenty one meeting approved a regulated activity for the installation of the two generators, the pads, below grade duct banks and the existing fire lane reconstruction within the one hundred foot jurisdictional review zone with conditions. In order to make sure that the natural resources are protected, I recommend the following conditions of approval. One, the town of Guilford zoning enforcement officer, officer should be notified to inspect the sedimentation and erosion control measure. That's his condition.
Okay, uh, anything else? Any questions from commissioners with respect to this application?
Or Phil, it's Jamie. I have a question. Um, these are, these generators will be used in a time of no power. Is it the intent or is this supplemental power?
Uh, this is in case of an emergency. This is, you know, we're, we're actually have a temporary generator onsite because we have inadequate emergency power there. So this will be, uh, replacing that.
Great. Well, thank you for doing that.
Well, will this have, um, the same, similar, uh, regular maintenance, like turn on periods as the generators that are inside now?
That's correct. We have Colerona that, that does our servicing of the generators. It'll be done according to their schedule.
Any other questions from commissioners? Any comments or questions from the public?
This is actually not a public hearing, uh, so.
But nonetheless.
Yes, we love the public.
Uh, would someone like to make a motion to close? Assuming you're done with your presentation, Jan and Tony?
Yes.
Okay, someone like to make a motion to close?
There's no.
Motion to close.
You don't need to close.
You don't have to close. We don't have to, hey, all right then. Um, let's get down to some business. Uh, deliberation of public hearings.
Do you want to just do this one, Phil, real quick? Get these folks out of here?
Sure, let's do that one. Go ahead.
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approved a site plan application for Yale New Haven Hospital at one twenty, uh, one eleven Goose Lane map seventy five lot thirteen to install an emergency generator as shown on Yale New Haven Health Shoreline Medical Center generator replacement prepared by Woodward and Curran at four sheets, uh, dated July ninth, twenty twenty one. Application is proved based on, uh, Kevin McGee's, uh, condition. This application is approved based on the finding that it conforms with the zoning.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Would you like to second that?
Yeah.
Uh, any, any concerns, discussion? I mean, I'm, I'm glad they're doing it. Yeah, I, I don't want to have to be there in emergency.
Yeah.
That's when the power is going to go out. You know, it's all about me, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll call the vote. All in favor, uh, Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Amy Stein?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yeah.
Phil Freeman?
Yes. Sean, your voice got higher.
Phil Freeman, um, and I'll also vote yes. Thank you very much for coming. It's been, been your patience.
Thank you very much. Good night.
All right, um, next item was James and Joyce Glass. This was the site plan for the renovation and addition within a hundred feet of the coastal resource. Would someone like to make a motion? Would someone like me to pull up a motion to be made?
Uh, voted that the government planning and zoning commission approve a coastal site plan application for James and Joyce Glass at number two Guilford Point Drive. Map twenty seven lot seven for renovations and additions as shown on, uh, preliminary drawings, glass residence, two sheets by plans ahead. They did three twelve, twenty twenty one revised to seven thirteen, twenty one, twenty one. And also cam site plan James and Joyce Glass by Harken Engineering LLC dated seven twenty eight, twenty one. Uh, this application is approved with whatever conditions we read into the record previously in deliberation of this application. Uh, this application is approved based upon the finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
Thank you, Scott. Someone like to second that?
Second.
Second.
Any questions, concerns, comments? I mean, it's a pretty straightforward one. Uh, with no objections, I'll call the vote. I'll vote yes. Phil Freeman?
Yes.
Frank DeAndrea?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
And Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Great, uh, enjoy the addition.
Thank you very much, guys. Have a great night.
You bet. Take care, Michael. See you soon. Um. Next one is the two applications for Vaughn Knowles and Gary Knowles. Um, this was the, you know, this is the petition for the zone boundary change and then the request to add this to the other zone and allow for drive-throughs, so.
They should be, you should vote on them. Uh, they should be voted separately, even, even though you consider them as kind of one application, they should be voted separately.
Do we do the, so you want first?
Motions to that effect, George?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think it makes any difference which one you do first, Scott.
Go for it, Scott.
Uh, voted that the government planning and zoning commission did deny a petition for his own boundary change from PV zone to TS zone for Vaughn and Gary Knowles as shown on application dated July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. This change is denied based upon the finding that it's not consistent with the plan of conservation development and will allow development that is not compatible with the orderly development of the area and will allow uses which are not appropriate to it.
Great. Someone like to second that?
Second.
Um, discussion, people want to comment on this? I mean, I.
Yeah, so, go ahead, Bill. You go first.
I do have a question only because, uh, was brought up before that, uh, the other folks came in for, uh, as Jamie pointed out, a, uh, special permit and this gentleman came in for a zone change. I'm just wondering what the thinking was behind that and whether the other approach is more appropriate.
Um, I'm not sure that that's what Jamie said or was asking about. But if you're talking about the other application, the other zoning amendment for the property over further west, um, that zone was changed to allow drive-throughs by special permit. Um, so it's basically this, this is the, essentially the same application. It's a different zone. Um, but it's essentially the same, it would work the same way. Is that, is that? Is that, does that answer your question?
My, my, the point I was trying to make, forgive me if I didn't make it correctly, is that the past proposal was in the PV two zone and just wanted the PP two zone to be allowed to have drive-throughs via special permit. And we granted that. This proposal is in the PV zone, wants to change to the TS zone, and then wants the TS zone to allow special permit.
Right, that's right.
Right, right, right.
But we're dealing with the first.
They referenced, they referenced the code, they want the code to be changed in table five to reference the fact that.
Allow for special permit.
So, the first one we're, I mean, I guess, the first one we're dealing with is, um, do we want to change the zone from PV to TS?
Okay.
Right, so Phil, I was gonna say that actually I, obviously we've demonstrated that we are willing to at least think about drive-throughs in various zones in this town. Um, but it's actually this zone change that I had the biggest problem with. Not only was it including their, their lot, but also a couple other lots along the road. Um, and, and, and I, you know, I just don't think this was an appropriate change to be made at this time, especially considering, um, that we are adjusting the zoning maps as part of our zoning rewrite as well. Um, and that can be better adjusted, uh, you know, better adjusted at that time.
I concur with your logic. Anyone else?
I think, Phil, you, you did say that it was, uh, potentially a good spot for something like that, so how would this applicant go for, go along if he wanted to get a, a drive-through there? Because I drove through the other day, it's kind of isn't a decent spot, it's not, it's neighbor is the place, I mean, it's not like.
I, I think part of the complication is the addition of all of the TS zone as part of this application. And what I might suggest is that, um, the motion to deny be amended to a deny without prejudice, so they can bring back an application of a similar nature. Um, if, if it goes to, so do so.
Yeah.
I think I, you know, again, I, I think it would probably be better timed, um, after we get kind of a a larger overview of the zoning code rewrite, uh, and whether or not as a commission, we feel that, you know, additional drive-throughs are a desirable thing, but I think that's.
It's difficult too, Bill, because we don't have any sort of mechanism to spot zone, um, drive-throughs in specific lots, nor does it sound like anybody has an interest in doing that, so it's just kind of a tough situation.
Well, I mean, I think to that point, Scott, um, you know, if we're looking to do a sweeping change to our commercial corridor, which means allowing drive-throughs via special permit, we should be engaging with the Chamber of Commerce with businesses along that commercial corridor with the, uh, you know, the, the, uh, uh, business owners of Guilford. I mean, I, I just, I.
And to that point, the residents of Guilford.
Sure, but I just have a problem and it, and it, and it bugged me about the last application too, is that one proprietor is, is making a, a, a sweeping change to a whole zone and we hear from the zone.
Uh, I agree. Um, any more comments or concerns?
Nice, George Verba, that's, I think I saw a wine glass.
Are we good on the discussion on this? We have a, a motion from Scott for denial on the zone change.
Without prejudice, if I recall what you said.
Yeah. You okay with that, Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll call the vote. Sean Cosgrove?
Yeah.
So this is yes to deny, sorry, just being clear. Sorry, Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Uh, no Frank, he's recused. Phil Freeman?
Yes.
And I shall also vote to deny this. We now have the other application before us.
Uh, voted that the government planning and zoning commission denied a, uh, petition by Vaughn and Gary Knowles to amend article XVII, section two seventy-three dash one twenty A, section, subsection six, to allow restaurant drive-through service by special permit in the DS zone in accordance with section two seventy-three dash one eighteen, and an amendment to the table five line twenty-seven A to add, uh, quote unquote, SP. This proposed amendment is denied based upon the finding that the commission is engaged in a comprehensive effort to revise the zoning code and specifically to determine where restaurant, restaurant drive-through service should be allowed. Approving such amendment with, without the benefit of this comprehensive town-wide review would not be consistent with this overall planning and zoning review. Um, once again, without prejudice.
Any discussion? I mean, obviously, we kind of jumped ahead of that, so there's a lot of things in this that I don't think we could have done anyway. So, any comments that concern, before we call the vote?
I have none.
Okay, great, uh, I'll call the vote to deny. Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank is recused. Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I'll also vote to deny that application, okay. Uh, next one is for Kelly Streeter, one nine six, Whitfield Street, map thirty-three, Lot eleven, Zone R one, special permit for additional lot coverage for certain structures. Uh, this is, as you recall, this was the application that Russ presented to us with the pool and the poolhouse and the deck. Nice drawings, nice plan. Um, Jamie, do you want to? Go ahead.
I'm on, so I might as well just.
You're on fire, Scott, go for it.
Just bang him out, Scott.
Voted that the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission approve a special permit for Kelly Streeter for additional lot coverage at one ninety-six Whitfield Street, map thirty-three, Lot eleven as shown on quote unquote, prepared for Kelly Streeter, unquote. Um, dated two fifteen twenty-one, revised to ten six twenty-one, I believe, by Harken Engineering. And, uh, quote unquote, Streeter Residence dated eleven thirteen twenty-one, uh, eight sheets by CK Architects. This application is approved with the following conditions laid out by memo from Kevin McGee. Um, this application is proved based upon the finding that the additional lot coverage will have no adverse impact on the adjacent neighborhood. Special permit is effective on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one and upon final filing with the town clerk.
Great. Someone like to second that?
A second.
Thanks. Um, so I think one of the points that, that Russ brought up, which I think is pretty valuable, is that there was a separate lot there that could have potentially been developed and by bringing this together as a cohesive, um, development of a single residential parcel, it, it is actually protecting the neighbors in a lot of ways. They might, sometimes, I'm not talking to Russ.
Just looking at the aerial, it's gonna fit very well with the neighbors on either side as well.
Right. Um, any comments or questions from commissioners? No, okay, uh, with no objections and no further comments, I'll call the vote. Sean Cosgrove in favorable approval.
Hi.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Frank, you back? No Frank?
No.
Okay, Bill Freeman?
Yes.
And I shall also approve. Thank you, Russ, appreciate all your time and efforts.
Thank you, good night.
Good luck with inland wetlands. All right, George, we're on, we, we got to you.
Uh, voted that the government planning and zoning commission approve a coastal site plan application for George Verba at seven sixty-three Mulberry Point Road, uh, map ten, lot one thirty-one for the installation of a elevator as shown on site plan and property map and s- map and south and east elevations and floor plan, prepared by George Verba, uh, PE, dated seven twenty-six twenty-one. Substitution is approved with, uh, conditions laid out by Kevin McGee, his memo. Uh, this application is approved based upon the finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
Great, thank you very much, Scott. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or concerns? I think it's a great idea. I'm glad to hear the batteries too, but nonetheless, I'm glad to hear you'll be able to make a long use of your property. Um, I'll call the vote. Sean Cosgrove?
Yes.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Uh, this Frank is not here still. Phil Freeman, I think Frank was a glass.
Yes.
And I shall also vote yes. Have fun with your project.
Thank you. Conveniently, guy.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, I think Frank got conveniently disconnected.
Yeah. Francesca, Francesca wanted her iPad back. Um, Chris Healy, we're gonna have a second meeting for Joseph and Darlene DeRosa. This is the site plan for the twelve by sixteen shed.
Voted that the government planning and zoning commission approve a coastal site plan application for Joseph and Darlene DeRosa for a shed at seven eighteen Mulberry Point Road, map ten, Lot eighteen, as shown on the application dated eight seventeen twenty-one, prepared by the applicant. Uh, this application is approved with the following conditions laid out by Kevin McGee in his memo, goes right into the record. Uh, this application is approved based upon the finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
Terrific. I want to watch.
Second.
Come on, Jamie, get in the rec. You want to second this?
Yes.
I'm getting, good. Uh, I don't have any problem with it. I think it's a good application. We went through it, so we'll call the vote. All in favor, Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Phil Freeman?
Yes.
I shall also vote yes. Have fun. Last one on the docket for this evening is Francis Slater and Michael Poole, five five three Mulberry Point Road, map sixteen, Lot fifty-seven dash one, Zone R five, coastal site plan for small edition. Um, and again, this does not include the memo from Sonya because they're not adding a bedroom at this time. Um, would someone like to, like Scott, you want to read a motion?
Voted that the government planning and zoning commission approve a coastal site plan application for an addition at five fifty-three Mulberry Point Road, Lot sixteen, I'm sorry, map sixteen, Lot fifty-seven dash one for Francis Slater and Michael Poole, as shown on quote unquote Slater Poole Residence. Uh, fifteen sheets dated seven eight twenty-one, prepared by William Thompson, AIA. Uh, this application is approved with the following conditions that were laid out by Kevin McGee in his memo that was written to the record. This application is approved based upon the finding that it conforms with the zoning code and is consistent with the coastal management policies of the state of Connecticut.
Second.
Thank you, Jamie. I'm not really comfortable with this application, it's just, I'm kidding. Sorry, well, it just, it, it happens late.
It's soup punch drunk hour.
Any, any comments or questions or concerns from the commission? No, okay, I'll call the vote then. Uh, all in favor of approving this site plan, uh, what is it, site plan? No, it's a coastal site plan, yeah. Sean Cosgrove?
Hi.
Jamie Stein?
Yes.
Scott Edmund?
Yes.
Phil Freeman?
Yes.
I shall also vote yes. Thank you for your patience, Will. Um, let's.
All of you, take care.
Uh, pending applications, new applications, town of Guilford Fire Department. Um, they want to build a fire training facility, receive and set public hearing for ten twenty. Are we gonna do this at our planning?
There's no, uh, there's no public hearing required for that.
Okay, well, it says receive and set public hearing date.
Yeah, it should be just received.
Okay.
You're not, you're not reading the most recent agenda, Phil.
You want to read it for me? Because I don't have the most recent one then.
No, go ahead, you're doing fine.
Uh, next one is Steve Philly on twenty-one. Meadow Pond Road, map one eighteen Lot forty-six, Zone R eight, special permit for thirty-four by twenty-four detached studio, receive and set public hearing for ten twenty, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So is that ten twenty, that's our meeting with Glenn, isn't it?
Right, but this is a very, uh, minor application and I think the person is, uh, convinced us that it's very important that we can do it quickly.
Right, I just want convinced you guys. I'm curious about that process, but we can talk about that at a later date. Um, and then Douglas Hoon, ninety-three Water Street, map thirty-two, Lot twenty-nine, Zone R three, special permit for seven hundred ninety-two square foot two-car garage set in public hearing date for eleven three.
Hey guys, quick question. I think there might be somebody here for the town of, the town of Guilford Fire Department to present tonight. Do you want to check?
I don't, I don't see anybody.
Who would that be?
It's the town engineer.
Yeah, but is he?
I don't see anybody.
Is he on the car?
No.
Might be.
There's no one else on the car right now.
No one, I, I see everyone on the, right, and I don't think there's anyone but us. That's a funny statement.
No, I don't think they're expecting that, Lisa.
They weren't expecting that tonight?
No.
Oh.
Just receives.
That's still pending a well, I think that's pending a well, it's application.
Is that pending wetlands?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
Then town of Guilford, fifty driveway, map thirty-four, Lot seventeen one, Zone I one, coastal site plan for replacement of municipal fueling station. Uh, receive a set public hearing for eleven three.
So moved to set all those public hearings.
Great, all in favor by show of hands? Very good, but the record show that it was unanimous. Uh, other commission business, uh, correspondence, there's a, do you have the letter, George? Or do we need, we'll just read it in? Letter received from Stevens and Associates regarding Long Hill Estates, requesting a site plan modification requesting, quote, "to support the provision of a variety of the energy production and distribution facilities to provide propane heating to new homes in lieu of natural gas" as shown on the approved plans. So they.
Phil Freeman will appreciate this discussion, but the original subdivision plan, this is really not under your jurisdiction, you don't have authority with regard to these matters, but the original subdivision plan uh, indicated that natural gas was gonna serve this development, uh, via the new roads that were, uh, gonna be developed. The applicant has decided that they don't want to do natural gas in the street. I think it's a cost, a cost consideration more than anything else. And they want to allow the individual lots to be served by their own onsite, uh, heating and ventilating systems. Uh, they're proposing, or they will propose when they build these houses to, to provide propane for each lot. Um, we, uh, we attempted to encourage them to go to all electric systems with, uh, heat pumps, uh, but, um, whether they'll go that way or not remains to be seen, um, but that, uh, they want, they're requesting that the subdivision map be changed to eliminate the, uh, the suggestion that there's gonna be natural gas in the street.
So it's really. Can we make the suggestion that they put electrical, um, you know, use all electric or is that outside of our?
We can suggest that. We actually did suggest that and that they, if they go to heat pumps.
Yeah.
But, um, the, uh, the builder said that his clients don't like heat pumps, they like to have furnaces and air conditioners, so.
Same thing.
What's that?
It's the same thing, it's just comes from a different source.
But, uh, at any rate, the, they want to eliminate the natural gas from the plans.
Did, I had a question about the reference in that letter to a stated goal of Guilford is having a diversity of fuels to support energy companies in the town. Did I make that up? Is that in there?
Support of the provision of a variety of energy production and distribution facilities.
I don't know where those words came from, are they?
Yeah, where's his citation?
I don't know.
Strike it.
That was in their letter, but where they got those words, I don't really know. It sounds like they're quoting from something, but they didn't say what they're quoting from.
Okay, so there's no stated goal of the town of Guilford to have a diversity of fuel sources that support.
Probably is, I.
It may or may not be.
We have this, we have a sustainable plan that the town has created, not the planning and zoning commission, but the board of selectmen adopted this sustainability plan and may have those words in it. But it is, it's advisory. And subject to interpretation as to what that actually means, obviously.
Micronuclear plants, just.
Um, so we don't really have any ability to.
I, I did ask, I, I, when I was going over this with George, I said, can we just say no? He's like, no, I was like, okay.
No, you can't say no.
I did ask.
No.
That's no on the no.
So this is an administrative site plan review or a modification?
It's actually a subdivision. It's a modification of the subdivision document itself, the plan that showed natural gas line. I think they just want to avoid confusion in the future.
Um, are they gonna have to redo their MyLars for signature?
Nah, I don't think so.
I think they should have to.
All right, well, we'll.
I'm, I'm holding them up.
It might not be on the Mylar, actually, it might be on the site development plan. I'd have to double check that, probably is.
So are we actually voting on this or is it just to let us know?
Yeah.
Is it?
If you wouldn't mind, we have a.
There is a proposed motion that's up here.
All right.
But, for planning and zoning commission approve a change in the subdivision plan for Long Hill Estates by deleting the provision of natural gas as shown on the approved plans.
All right, uh, deserve a second.
Second.
I'll call the vote. Sean?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
I'm gonna vote no.
Thank you, thank you, Phil.
But just a point of clarification, the, the motion says that there's no longer gonna be natural gas. It doesn't say what the supplement is.
They're not required to do natural gas.
Right. They could, they could do.
They could do solar.
Right.
It's very simple.
So don't feel bad, Bill. You didn't, you didn't give it away.
All right, I had a chance to review the minutes and found them to be substantially correct. Did anybody else take a peek at them?
I did.
Thank you.
I did not.
And I will.
Use the minutes for nine fifteen?
Uh, from our last month, approval of minutes from nine one.
Meeting on nine fifteen.
So we had the, the middle meeting in September was Glenn's meeting.
Twenty, I think.
Yeah, the Monday, the twentieth, sorry? Um, so, uh, I made a motion to approve. Jamie seconded um, by a show of hands. Approval of the minutes.
Yeah.
And Bill, because you didn't read them, you have to abstain. It's okay.
Okay.
Um, we know further business before, is there any further?
Quick question for George, if you don't mind. Um, have we gotten any sort of? I know that every time that something comes up on Route One, it jogs in my mind about safe streets and sidewalks. Have we gotten any sort of direction from safe streets of like where we're supposed to be requiring sidewalks versus not?
They haven't gotten that far in their plan, uh, but that will be part of the safe streets plan is my understanding. Uh, they've also made some suggested changes uh, in our zoning code, knowing that we're doing this comprehensive rewrite. They've been working with Glenn a little bit on that to try to get some uh, some of their ideas into the zoning code, which I think we're gonna highlight. Maybe at the next, at the next meeting with, with Glenn.
Scott, Scott, there is a, there is a public, I'm not sure it's technically a public hearing, but there's a public meeting.
Right.
With the safe streets coming up, George, is it this month?
Uh, I'm sorry, I wish I, I wish I knew the date. That would be good to get out there. Um, you're right, there is a meeting coming up in the near future. I don't have the date right in front of me.
And they are talking about their, their, um, you know, the report, the. I think the, so I've seen a preliminary report that's based on the consultant's um, findings.
But they're gonna come out with like a, a plan of town, right?
They want to share it with the community, well, they want to get more feedback.
Right, yes.
That's correct.
All right, but uh, for instance, this one that came before us today, that's a zoning change. That's not necessarily something, someplace where we would require. It's more of like. Site plan that we would require.
It would, it would be ideal if we could get something that would be, that, that we're not gonna conflict with anything that they're gonna recommend. Absolutely.
Yeah, that's definitely part of their, that's part of their program for sure.
Thinking down the road, um, when we start talking about drive-throughs, I think you really have to also factor in not only traffic. Pedestrian safety with respect to.
Yeah.
You know, that's a pretty important factor.
And, and one of the things that is, you know, is not being. I mean, all those drive-throughs that were approved many, many years ago is before there is a level of driver distraction that you have today. Now with people who get a cup of coffee, you know, put their foot in the accelerator and, and have the cup of coffee in one hand. And, you know, and, and if, if there's a pedestrian with a sidewalk that's going across. A drive-through, they're in the crosshairs.
Especially if it's not a guarded, a, a situation with a light. Yeah, it's definitely.
Yeah, sure, exactly.
Frank, have you ever had any issues?
Is there a?
With?
Been hit by a car?
Oh, I mean, Frank, if the Frank got hit by a car, the car would get totaled. You know, it's.
Three hundred pounds, it doesn't, Scott might have a better.
I'd be like a moose. You take out the legs and the whole body comes right out on top. It's bad, it's bad, don't try it.
All right, well, we gotta catch up with George Verba, so.
All right.
If someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Thank you. By a show of hands?
Tonight.
The record shows unanimous. Thank you for all your help tonight, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Thank you all.
Good job, George.
Yeah, George, you did it.
Thanks.
Kinda.
Practice, George.
Okay, at the end there.
Hey, you got, you got better.